I was ready, I'm gonna go.
Okay, I'm gonna call the media to order and would everyone please rise for pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council members are here. First, I'm gonna ask for, I'm going to add the Depot Association for A.B. on the agenda. And so could I get approval on the agenda from someone?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion made by Josh. Josh, seconded by Brad to approve the agenda with the Depot Association as A.B. on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Motion's carried. Let me move on to number seven, which is concerning purchase of ball field fencing at Lyons Park. And Joe, you wanna take that on?
Yeah, I think basically we just had to rebid because last year we did approve it, but prices went up. So we got the bids again from two different companies. One was from Valley Fence and I think the other one was Center Fence. And Valley Fence, I think, increased about $2,000 from the previous year, so.
Okay, anyone have any questions about this? What's in the budget except $2,000 more?
Yeah.
Just part of how it is. Questions?
No.
Okay. If not, then do I have a motion to approve whichever bid you like, which I assume it is Valley Fence.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with Valley Fencing.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, a motion is made by Josh and by Rick to go with Valley Fencing for the ballpark, ball field at the cost of $20,491. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. And Andy, you're next on the agenda.
We're completed with the plans and specifications for the 2018-2019 project. Had a chance to sit down and review the plans with staff and incorporate their comments into their, into the plans. So at this point, we'd be looking for the council to approve the plans and authorize advertisement for bids. We've got a few easements on the, on the project that are in process. They should be completed here shortly. The only, with the, the only kind of outstanding thing that we're still working on is there's a possibility where we can maybe get a different storm sewer outlet for that intersection of Third Street and First Avenue. Joe's been talking with the property owners, see if we could get approval to cross his property to make a connection. If that happens, we'd make a, a plan change with the storm sewer that's available to us in that intersection. It's really, really shallow. We can make it work if that's all that there is available to us. But if we do get approval to hook into that, 60-inch storm sewer that was installed back in 1992 across the field. Some of you remember back in the day. If we have approval to do that, then we'd make a plan revision to go forward with that. Looking to have approval of the plans and specifications and call for bids. And the intent would be to receive bids at 11:00 a.m. on, on May 3rd. It would give the council an opportunity then to consider the bids and award the work if desired at the regular meeting.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Andy? Guess if not, then a motion is in order for us to approve Resolution 2018-5, which is approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made by Rick, seconded by Ralph to approve Resolution 2018-5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Andy. Mr. Eldred.
I'm here tonight to represent the Fairfax Depot Association. And thank you for putting this on your agenda tonight. We really appreciate it. The Fairfax Depot has a long history. It actually has a longer history than the city of Fairfax in terms of a legal entity. Legal entity. Fairfax was incorporated in 1988.
1881.
Tuesday, 1888. 1888, the building was built in 1883. And as you all know, the building is owned by the railroad group. And the Fairfax Historic Association has a 99-year lease on it. The city of Fairfax has been very good to the Depot Association. You guys have helped us with mowing, maintenance issues, promotions. You could go back through the years that I've been here. And the city of Fairfax, it's one of its major tourism promotion items. And so those sorts of things. But we have a problem at the depot. It's getting old. And it is, it is on the National Register of Historic Places. And we need to repair things in the correct manner. So that means the new roof cannot be asphalt. It can't be, you know, tin. It can't be metal. It can't be fake wood shingles. It needs to be cedar shingles. And the price to do that is around $30,000. We're getting about $10,000 from the insurance that we have. We've already raised around $12,000 and have $12,000 and have raised a couple thousand more in pledges. But we're still needing help. And so I'm talking to you as individuals as well as the council. I hope you as individuals will consider making a pledge or a donation to the Depot Association. I'm not as a computer literate as some of you are, I'm sure. But I spent about half an hour about after the bank closed and just pulled up the Fairfax Depot. There's just a lot of neat pictures, a lot of history that's on there. The National Registration of Historic Places was done in June of 1986, you know. So it's not that long ago. Some of you are younger people. Hmm, there's none here. You know, 1986 doesn't seem that long ago, but it really was, you know. But the museum started in 1983, excuse me, 1987. And so, but if you've not been in the depot, you need to go into it. We were just there the other day, and I'm just amazed at the collection that's in there. And we need to maintain that building. We need to keep that building. It's not, it's not a building owned by the city of Fairfax. We can't ask you for a donation. But what I am gonna ask you for is that you would consider, next month at your regular meeting, is that you would consider becoming a member, the city of Fairfax would consider becoming a member of the Fairfax Depot Association with an annual dues of $1,000 a year. That's what I'd like to ask for you to consider this next month. Mayor, if you can maybe put that on the agenda? Would appreciate that. Jerry Welley wanted to visit about a couple things about the depot.
I'm not the oldest person here, but I'm pretty darn close. I've been going to that depot for over 70 years. I can remember going there with my father when he shipped seed wheat to North Dakota. We brought 12 bushels in, and two bushels in a bag, 120 pounds plus the sack. And we were told by the depot agent, "We can't ship it that way. It's gotta be double bagged." So we had to take it home, pour it all out, reweigh it, and double bags. I run my particular class as class reunions. And the number one thing those people want to see when they come to town is the depot. Second is either the ballpark or the school. We were fortunate, the last time we got to see not only the depot, but the jail and the pump house, all three of them. I also go to a lot of other class reunions that come to town just as a guest or a snoopy. And the same thing there. They want to see the depot. They want to see their class pictures. They want to see what's there. And I wrote an article a few weeks ago about the depot. And one of the things that got taken off as it was a little short was, my comment was that this may not be the oldest building in town, but it's certainly the most historically important building in town. There is help coming as far as donations goes. We'll get this shingling done. But the maintenance on long-term is what concerns me the most. Not only are the people on the depot committee getting older, we don't have very many young people coming. We've gotta encourage younger people to be involved, probably not only in this depot museum, but other museums in the area. I work with four different museums. And that's one of our problems, is getting younger people involved. History is important to us. And it's certainly important with that particular building. So I would hope that you could find some way to help out. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And yes, we will put it on the agenda. And yes, I think it's very, very important. And I think that, I'm sure that the rest of the people on the council probably feel the same way. And we'll see what we can do to help you. Okay? It'll be on the agenda in May. Okay? Okay, then moving on, we're going on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions in regard to the consent agenda?
Correction, a minute.
Correction, in the last meeting, Nick, Nicholas has been down for during the meeting, which should have been Josh.
That should have been Josh Bunkers during the meeting. It's the very last.
Second page, right where you sign.
Rick Tim is listed as seconded. He couldn't have because he wasn't there.
Very good. Okay, so then I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any other questions on any other thing on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the change in the council minutes to that last paragraph from Tim to Josh. Okay? Everybody understand that? Have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made by Rick, seconded by Josh to approve the minutes as I stated them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Then we're gonna go on to the township fire protection agreement. And we have a copy of that in front of us right here. And Nick, you wanna take over? Or does someone else wanna take over?
I'll certainly take this one up. The other two you have in front of you is it's redlined version, which is the original. And then you have the language that is proposed to be crossed out. And then the new language that is proposed to be added, that is underlined in red. And the other one you have is what's called the clean version. And this would be if accepted, this is what it would look like as accepted. So we'll go over the redlined version. First, we just have some date, some date changes at the top there. And then we get into the stipulations as part of the agreement and number one. We are looking at updating that to include the 2017 Ford ambulance. And then include the language that states that the ambulances are replaced every 10 years. There was a little bit of confusion the last go-around here. Because it's every 10 years, sometimes that length of time, people tend to forget that this comes around. This kind of leads into one of the future ones we'll talk about. But they wanted to have that in there, just so everybody who reads the contract is reminded that this purchasing takes place every 10 years. Then number three, this bleeds down into number three. The original language you have there is, "In the event a unit defined in appendix X or A if needs to be replaced, the city will advertise for bids if the bid for a unit with both city and..." "If the bid is for a unit with both city and township ownership, the city and township must both approve acceptance of the bid." In this last ambulance that we purchased, there was, there was some miscommunication that happened. The townships weren't allowed their opportunity to accept that bid. Not sure what happens a little bit before I was here. But I know that was a little bit of a sore spot for the townships that they were consulting, even though it's in the agreement that they should have been. So about that, we have the language that's in there, just to make sure communication is upheld in the future. The added language, "If a unit is purchased without prior approval of both parties, the uninformed party is not responsible for any payment." We just want to ensure that that communication is going to take, take place. Go down to number seven. We had that crossed-out language there. Talked about nine firefighters, but if more were needed, they would be summative needed. Looked at changing that language to say appropriate and proper personnel and equipment based upon the need, availability, and best practices for abatement of the emergency. This allows the fire department to be more flexible in the deployment of their personnel and resources to manage whatever emergency takes place. Number eight, townships were fine with deleting that entirely. No longer applies. We don't have to keep that engine in town in order to get our, get our state fire aid. So going back to making sure the department can deploy their resources effectively. And then number nine, which is proposed to be deleted. That gets towards more of breaking down some of those barriers associated with who owns what pieces of equipment. And getting more into the mindset of the city and townships are working together to provide fire protection in a collaborative environment. So we don't want to get bogged down by who owns what and what's gotta stay where. It's about providing that fire protection service for everybody in our, in our district. So they have proposed removing that as well. Then in number 11, just crossing, crossing out that currently amount, because that can change from year to year. And this is a five-year agreement as it's proposed. So next year could change, the year after could change. So best just not to have it in there. And then number 12, and in the final paragraph, or 12-13, and the final paragraph, just some minor language changes there for titles and things of that nature. I met with the Township Association yesterday evening here at City Hall. We went over all of these items. And we, after the meeting, we thought this would be good and appropriate to bring to City Council. Any questions on any of that?
Any comments from you guys?
We met with Nick last night, and I think we're totally agree on one. He added some things, we added some things.
We're all pretty much on board with the language just presented by Nick. Just cleaned up some stuff a little bit and made it a little easier to operate.
I like it. It looks better than what we had before. Okay. Then I guess if there are any questions, then we just need to have a motion to accept the agreement. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept fire ambulance agreement.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made by Brad, seconded by Josh to approve the township fire protection agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, you guys. Go ahead, Jerry.
On behalf of the Royal Fire Act, I was trying to pick for the work last night. I'm getting this tape.
Well, thank you, guys, for putting in your time to it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Ladies and... Okay, number 16. Okay, we need to consider approval of personnel policy amendment for the police department. Scott went over that with us at our last meeting. And we have it in here. Any other questions in regard to that?
Any comments from the Personnel?
Any comments from Personnel Committee that you wanna add?
I'd great like to recommend going ahead and approving it.
No more comments from anyone? Guess not. Then I need a motion to approve the personnel policy amendment for the police department.
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion made by Rick, seconded by Brad to approve the personnel policy amendment for the police department. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. With that, Nick, you're next.
All right. A little bit organized here. So I've been doing the monthly PowerPoint presentations. But quarterly, I want to make sure you got in your hands a hard copy of the numbers, the revenue expense report, as well as the balance sheet. I just want to go over some things with, and then I've also included as part of the package is the print-off of the one slide with the investment cash balances. It wasn't worth just throwing up one slide on there, so I just printed it off for everybody. But if we go to the revenue and expense report, just want to hit a couple of things unless anybody has any other questions. Starting on page one, and I remind you, this is double-sided paper. Starting on page one of the report, if we go down to, this is the revenue side for the general fund under local government aids, kind of midway through. And then we're gonna go down to, the code on the left is going to be 33422, other state grants and aids. You can see we are over budget, which means we have surplus in there of $23,000. And what that is associated with is the small cities development grant funding that we receive. So that is the cause for the overage there. Then if we go down to the next category, which is general miscellaneous charges. And that would be code number 34206, fire department revenue. 28, we're over in that. We didn't have anything budgeted for that. We're over by 4,000. And that is because in 2018, we started charging for fire calls within city limits. So now we are generating revenue as part of that. I was unaware of that going into the budget season, about a week to work on the budget. But it's a good thing it's on the revenue side. It's more money than we were anticipating. It's good. Then if we go to page, go to page four. Page four, if we go down to category, general government buildings. And near the bottom, 41940-401, buildings, we're over by about $1,800, $1,900 in there. And what that is for is that we received the money from, as part of the Depot Association match. There was a donor that would match every $1,000, up to $5,000. And they had donated that money to the city as the holding agent for that. So we had received that on the revenue side. And this is where we are expensing that, going on the expense side. So it's, it's not, it's not a true expense. We received donated money, and now that donated money is going out, is what that is. So it's offset. Then if you go to page five, down to the fire department. And then we go down a ways, about halfway, 42200-240, minor equipment purchase. You can see we're about 70%, even though we're a quarter way through the year. And a big chunk of that is because at the beginning of the year, we had to purchase fire foam, which was $1,600. So we shouldn't expect that to continue on a linear trend for the rest of the year and be over budget. If we go to page six, in the general fund, we'll go down to first part, the ambulance. We'll go down to, near the bottom of ambulance, 42353-404, maintenance and repairs. And see, we're at about 67% on that. And we had a repair to the 2008 ambulance that involves some valves. I think it was valves and a couple other things within the engine that needed some repairs. And that was about $2,000 to repair that. So that's why that spiked. Otherwise, we'd be more normal than that. We go down to civil defense, near the bottom on the same page. Down to the bottom, code 404, once again, maintenance and repairs. You have $750 there. That's where that maintenance contract we approved at the last meeting with, that's a name, frontline warning sirens, that we approved. That's where that money goes. I'm not sure why, there wasn't anything budgeted in civil defense before. I'm not sure why it's there now, but that's where it ought to go in there. But we'll correct that in the next budget season. Then on page seven, under highway, streets, and roads, we'll go down to short code 303 for engineering fees. That's about 45%, but that's where the street project and engineer costs are going. And then we go towards the bottom for ice, well, at the bottom, for ice and snow removal. Very bottom there, 404, maintenance and repairs. We're over on that by $1,400. But we've just had several repairs to the snowplow equipment this winter. Otherwise, then if we go to page 10 for notables, under the baseball park at the top. And then if we go to at the bottom line there, code 500, Capital O'Pole Baseball Park. We didn't have anything budgeted, but we have $3,500 worth of expenses. Again, the same donor who gave money for the depot station also gave money to renovate a museum at the ballpark. So that's where that's being expensed up. So it's a transfer in, transfer out, not a true expense. And that is it for the general fund. If we'd like to go into the utility funds, we certainly can. But usually the general fund is the main one we like to hit up with this. So if anybody's got any questions on anything else, we'd be more than happy to entertain.
Any questions, anyone? Okay.
So that's financial reports. Just a couple of things for my city administrator report, not gonna be too lengthy. We should have the audit here in May for approval. That's what we're anticipating that, ready. If not then, then June. And then at the next City Council meeting, we propose we go into a closed session prior to the meeting to conduct a six-month interview on myself. And then how that will work, I will put together the evaluation tool. I'll make sure I get it in all of your hands at least a couple of weeks in advance for you to look at, mull over, fill out on your own, then we can meet prior in a closed session setting and go over everybody's comments on that. And that's all I have.
Nick, I kind of talked about that today. About six months, I'm not sure what we had in our contract, if we had any evaluation or not. But I think it'd just be good for everyone. It's just, you know, you can visit and see where we're at. And I think Trenton, you said that we can go, we'll have a closed session, but then we have a, we open it with a summary. We just have, we do a summary afterwards. Okay? Okay. Anything else, Nick?
That's all I have.
Well, that's short. Okay. Good job.
I don't have a whole lot either. I've just been doing some maintenance and...
Snow removal?
Yeah, snow removal. Again, this weekend, maybe. The park fence, I'm gonna, I talked to the guy that's gonna be doing it. And hopefully, we can get one field done at least, if not both of them done for the city celebration. So he's gonna try and work on that. He's gonna come and do it weekends and stuff, so if he can get it taken care of.
Will we still be able to play ball for that middle school there during construction?
Yep. Yeah, he'll, he'll have everything put away. And I'll make sure that, you know, there's nothing in the way, so you guys can still do what you gotta do, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Frinick, you are next. I did tell him mister. Didn't call Nick mister.
Where's the microphone?
You speak loud enough.
Do I?
Just speak.
Okay. In March, we had 147 calls. That's pretty much all we did. Any questions? We're gonna be going, doing more yard checks since we can see where the vehicles are parked now and the snow's gone. So just to warn you guys, pretty much every time we do one, somebody tells the office and kind, so. All right?
Nothing else? Everything's going very smoothly then?
So far.
What are the rules on where you can park your vehicles?
It's gotta be parked on a pavement or parking surface.
Is that for campus too?
Every, every vehicle. Every vehicle.
So one in your backyard, no good?
Trailers.
Trailers, anything. In the winter, we really don't care as much because it's frozen ground. It's off the street, it's out of the way. But still, we have it in our ordinance, and they can't do it. So that's why we pretty much do it when it starts thawing. Then we can actually see if they're parked on a surface, or what surface they're parked in, so.
I think you have quite a few to check on.
Yeah, a lot of new people moved to town, so.
And maybe they don't know where our ordinance is.
Yeah. Hopefully. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, and now next, we have our new liquor store manager, Brittany Cottler. Is that correct? Did I pronounce your last name? I don't know if all of you have met her or not, but okay.
I think I've met most of you, but... My name's Brittany. I'm the new liquor store manager. I've only been over there for about a month now. The staff has been awesome. They've been, you know, a little bit of learning here, but it's, they've been really helpful. So I'm lucky there. I did get my Surf Safe Food Manager certification. We've had three new employees in the last month. The last two weeks, I believe, we actually got three new employees. We did bingo... We did bingo on March thirtieth. We had a pretty decent turnout for that. We're working with either the baseball association or the fire department to hopefully do it again. This time we can have like a buy-in. We're also looking to do like a cash cow drawing. I want to try and implement more things to do, not necessarily more music. Because I, when I first started, I asked all the regulars, as well as the employees, you know, what's, what do you like? What do you dislike, what do you want to see? And the overwhelming majority said plus music. So we're kind of working on getting a little more activity based things. I'm also working with Nick on doing some cost cutting, as well as increased revenue plans.
Good. Thank you. You're welcome.
Your menu all looks pretty nice.
Thank you. Thank you, Brittany. Okay, then moving on to, we have the building permit listing, the packet, the minutes. Anybody have any comments on any of them? Small Cities Development Program Tracking Report. And now we have school coming to clean up today, and you want to bring that over?
Just, you know, Nicholas came up, and we got talking about some dates, and I figured what we said, the eleventh? Is that it?
The eleventh and the eighteenth, or the two.
So just kind of look down in the past, if you can have the grasser around, and we'll.
Okay.
We'll wash out the thing and wash the tables, and there may be some kids that get wet.
You'll have fun.
It's pretty fun.
We can do that, so.
Okay, along with that, Nick and I have talked a little bit today. And I think springtime is an important time for us to get everyone going to think about cleaning up their yards and cleaning up, because everything looks a little nasty after the winter. So we talked about possibly sending out a mailing, you know, just something. And maybe it could be done in the utility bills too, or something. Just telling people, you know, reminding them that, hey, this is the time to clean up your yard, get rid of things if you're not using them, and get them out of the yard. And then probably putting a little something in the paper about it too. And I think that would, I think that's a good idea.
Are we having the dumpster day again? Like we've had where the dumpsters out there and you can throw stuff away?
Dumpster day, yes. We need to have the dumpster day.
What do you really call it? I don't know.
I don't know.
I think it's just cleanup day.
Citywide cleanup.
Yeah.
So I think with that, yeah, it's probably cleanup day, not.
That's what I think, it was cleanup day.
Yes, and so how do we can incorporate all this into it? Nick, getting all this?
Yep.
Okay. Then the other thing Nick and I talked about today was that evaluation. He already told you about that. And anybody have any, council members have any concerns, any issues, any comments, any? No? Why do you look at me so funny? Okay, then I guess, Nick, anything else?
Don't have anything else?
Okay, then I guess I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Ralph, to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or motion's carried.
Well, this is the toughest one we had of all, okay?
I can read along. I'll blame Brittany, she was long-winded. Tourist report.
I think you were there when I went in there the other day.
Oh, I'm sure.
My wife and I were there last day.
They all kind of blur together after a while, but.
That's about the fourth.